What's the subject of your meeting? Yeah, okay. Say hi to Katie at least.
So this is the March 15, 2022 Select Board Meeting. We're gonna wait a minute or two for another Select Board member before we begin. Hi, Katie.
Hi, everybody.
Your uncle.
So we're, while we're waiting, we're going to move on to correspondents, seeing as there's no one from the community to have comments. Do you have comments?
Just want to re-decide it's the value of having two monitors here.
Okay.
If that ever hits on the agenda, maybe if you guys want to buy that.
And could you remind us of the benefits?
So right now I have one of the screens on my monitor. You can't see it. That way you can have the grid of all the people. And separately, you can have either the speaker or you can have the presentation on the separate monitor, which we have a lot of, I feel like that's being used a lot, the presentation, as well as showing something from the camera to the room. And that way you can see both the people in the meeting and the document. And both of them up there.
And why would you want to see the people in the meeting?
The trickiest thing is you don't necessarily need to see the people in the meeting when the presentation's up, but I have to switch the screens manually.
Oh, I see.
And that requires me or somebody to be here to do that. And if you have them both up there already, just, it's touch-free.
Do you still have to do the screen sharing?
Well, one will be up there. I don't, one will be up there. Yeah, so if you wanted to share something from this computer into the meeting, you'd have to do a screen share, but if you were sharing something on the document, you just have to change the camera. Both are their primary function with rules. I think the price of a matching monitor of that size would be probably in the six, between six and eight hundred dollars. My instinct. But I can pull up some examples and submit them to you. Sorry about that. I'll look out for next time.
What, does it need to be the same size?
No. It doesn't, I just thought it would look nice. That's it, that's my comment.
All right, so we're, we have four of us here. Let's move on to number two organizational meeting of the select board. We need to have an election of a chair upcoming year. Do you have a nomination?
Nomination, a motion to nominate Linda Martin, the chairman, chair. I'll second that.
Do you have any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. We are looking for a nomination for the election of the vice chair. Let's nominate Kurt Klein as vice chair.
I'll second that nomination.
Do you have any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Nominations for the election of a clerk?
Nominate Richard B. as clerk. Who?
I'll second that. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. The adoption of the rules of procedure. I looked it over, it's something you do every year. We all signed it last year. I'm not sure if it's in your packet there, but I can give you a copy of the one.
That's not in the back there.
It's the one, the copy of the one we all signed last year. If you want to look at it on the card. It just lays her book. How the board's book. The Select Board meeting's her book. It's no different than what we saw last year. Just saying, things like the, you have never before, you know, the majority of the time. So fascinating. Members can't make decisions on their own. Do you have?
We need a, I'll make a motion to accept the, to let out the rules of procedure as previously. I'll second that motion.
Do we have any further discussion on that? Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. And I'll pass this around for our signatures. We need to set the official date and time of our regularly scheduled meetings.
It's the first and third Wednesday of every month. It's 6:00 PM seems to work.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yeah.
I'm not going to take a motion on that. That's our official. We need to make a designation of newspaper from now this is.
News and citizen.
For news and citizen. And I would also say whether that says newspaper on our front porch form and our website. There's three, thank you, three major places where we notices. Does anyone have anything else, any place else they'd like to add to that?
Okay.
Yep. Stand tutorial, we, the post will be turning it posted at the town office and the library.
You don't, you don't put one in the post office?
Yes, the minutes and the agendas are all gonna, we can put that in there.
Okay.
We need to still the monitors rate in the upcoming year.
Do we know what that is? Fifty-five.
That's what I was. And what are we paying now?
Fifty-five. That's what we're paying now. The fifty, um, fifty-eight is what I think the state is paying. I don't, I don't.
That was sixty-five.
Oh, sixty-five, okay.
Sixty-five.
And what was the state? Well, it must not be up to date.
We've been on sixty-five cents a mile.
Twenty-five, sixty-five point five.
Did you send that fifty-eight?
It was fifty-eight last year. Well, it's saying point six five five is for Vermont if it's a state-owned or leased vehicle.
We would be enough.
Yeah. A point six five five five. That's from the University of Vermont and the state of Vermont.
Both.
What is the number?
Point six five five.
It's the same as the federal.
Sixty-five point five.
Sixty-five five. And then you're going one more. It's almost like sixty-five and a half.
It's what it is.
Effective January first it was.
In the state as well?
That's the same.
Same.
So what we want to say, we're paying fifty-five cents a mile now.
Yep, we're. Last use that you said.
If it used much? Or it's a lot?
I use it and the guys use it.
Listers.
Listers.
The listers go out, they look at properties. If the guys need to go to Jericho or something and take a truck or truck parts.
Yeah, they take their own vehicle.
And.
Yeah.
And when they're going to the bank. I mean, it's, it's not like tons of money.
Can I say we should go with the state and federal?
You're definitely not going to get rid of that, will this? Price for gas.
I'm going to have a motion for, to go with the federal and state rate of point six five, point five.
I'll say it.
Do we have any other discussion on what the rates are? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you know? So carry. Right. Amendments to the agenda. I have Kate on Zoom here. She called last minute and asked if she could speak to us about funding that she has possibly, or an application for funding for the Bourne's property. And if we could take her next, I'd appreciate it. Do you have any other amendments to the agenda though?
No.
No. Okay. All right, Kate.
Thank you, appreciate it. So two small updates. We, as you might recall, we funded the Bedell acquisition with Vermont Housing and Conservation Board funds and have secured those, but we have been waiting patiently to see if the Whisper program through Vermont DEC would be a partner here. And they still have not hired a staff person to run the Whisper program, even though it's been over two years. So they said they're still interested, but we can't wait any longer. So we are applying for the federal community forest program funds to use for the Bourne acquisition. This is federal money. It actually, while federal money is kind of complicated, it actually will come with less strings attached than the Whisper funds will come in terms of future trail building or road building on the Bourne side of the proposed community forest. And I think, you know, I mean, you can, you can still kind of do all the aquatic protection that you want, but it will give you a little bit more flexibility. The request for proposals was just released last Friday, and they have a fairly quick turnaround for it. The applications are due March 31st. Trust Republic Land will write the full application, but it does need to be submitted by the town as the applicant, so we can work with you on that submission. And it's submitted actually to the state of Vermont. And then the state of Vermont submits it to the U.S. Forest Service. It, it's basically an eight-page project description and a couple maps and some budget forms. The one thing that we do need to happen in the next month or so is that we need to make sure that Wiltit is registered in the U.S. government system for award management, the SAM program. So if you've had a federal grant recently, then you should be in there already. But you do need to kind of make sure that your registration is active. So that's one thing we just wanted to check up on.
So they are still working on it. I have an appointment next Tuesday. We're on the phone, a Zoom meeting with the lady barber who's going to be helping me finalize it. I got all my documents from the Secretary of State sent in. Now we just have to talk to a line person to fix it.
Great, okay. And, and that isn't required as part of the application, but it is required that you have an eligible SAM before the award happens. So like, which will be, you know, April or May.
Right.
And then I was just curious, who at the town should I correspond with to actually submit the application? So it's, it's just an email to the state and then one email to the Forest Service, but it will need to come from a town email.
Anything, Mr.?
Do you want to be there as chair or as project manager?
Oh, can you do both?
I'm sorry, can you?
We're asking if there, can you have two from the board?
For the application or just for the email?
Just who, who is the representative for the town that will send in the application? So who will email the application to the state and the feds?
Well, Kurt can, he's the project manager. Do you feel comfortable doing that for him?
Sure.
Great, okay, well, I will correspond with Kurt. And so the question is, do any of you want to review the application and make comments on it before it's submitted? So that we just give you enough time to do that.
I'd like to take a quick look at it.
Okay, great, so we'll make sure you have it at least a four or five days before it's due on March 31st. The second thing I wanted to update you with is the Vorak grant, which is the $196,000 for the trail construction. So they, as part of the, the funding, require that the trails that are built with this money are kept open for public recreation for a certain period of time. I think it's 15 years. So the conservation easement on the community forest will guarantee public access to the trails that are on the community forest. But the trails that are built on the school land and then the bridge that's going to be built on the town rec property will not be part of the conservation easement. So we just need to get a letter from the town that says the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that is built with the Vorak funds will be kept open for public recreation for a minimum of 20 years. So I am happy to draft that letter and we'll just need it signed from someone at the town. And that's all I got.
Okay.
Looks like the stewardship committee is working hard.
They are, yes.
I think, oh, yeah.
And they've had, they had a recent tracking workshop out on the property that was really great, so. All right, thanks for letting me skip the line on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Take care.
You get to go on that log now?
No, I've been having going to restore nineteen sixty-nine.
Okay, approval minutes of March 1st. Take a motion.
I'm going to vote you through the minutes of March. I'll say a plan.
Do we have discussion on them, corrections, emissions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. So we have a moment from the community, I'll just do a quick correspondence.
I, I think that, that particular bill in there, it's electric bill. It was for fixing the lights in the bathroom, I guess.
Kitchen.
Kitchen. I'm just wondering if this, um, this electrician is based in Los Angeles?
Paul Chester, would they have other places?
Okay. I just thought the bills.
I mentioned that with Linda too, that maybe we should look for someone a little. I would be curious to see what they charged the hourly rate last time. They did the garage.
Yeah, they did the garage.
And they did this.
Yeah, and they put the spotlights inside.
So I'm curious to see what, if their rate has gone up or do I need to call them about something? Yeah. I'll send it to you for I to, you know, try and decide. I wouldn't show that this one.
Oh, I'm actually, I'm curious, this is the so this is the permit, environmental conservation.
Yeah.
They're just looking for municipal roads general permit. Is this, is this something we do every year?
Yes, general roads permit. It's just giving you a timeline of what things to do and everything.
Okay.
So that's basically, yeah.
So April 1st, there, there is the annual report form and the annual upgrading to do. Is that something that you do or?
You, you, the highways thing. We also, in the bills, the orders, there is what we pay to the state and then we've got the bill on for that, which is due April 1st. And usually by April 1st, if you are going to, we have a special road that we don't allow standard weights on, like Gulf Road used to be on there. We have to go on and put that on by April.
But that has nothing to do with this general permit.
Well, no, no, absolutely nothing, I know that. But the general permit is what we're getting ready to pay.
Right, but that's, that, the general permit has to do with erosion. And it's not something. Absolutely, it has to do with all kinds of erosion, water runoff that Dylan is working on. The other thing is due in February for, oh, we don't have any anymore, so we're not putting anything on there. I think Kurt, you already went on anyway.
I've already done it, yeah.
This has to do with our erosion and then you have to go online and put every road that you worked on in our map segments.
And this is what we did last year with Rob. Right?
Some of it, but I thought Dylan was doing it. We, we had to be something like 15% done
Right.
last year. I'm hoping Dylan went on, I've asked him. So every time he does one of these roads, like Marsh Road, and he does all that ditching, he needs to go on that program. And so we have to every year just get permission. We just need to get permission to I don't know why we have to get permission to a lot of water and running our roads. I don't know, but that's what all. Submit annual report form. Where is that form? That's the form we need. And I'm sure you can find that on that website.
What's our name for it?
Michelle will send in the operating fee, which she has orders. I don't know if she'd go together. And how much is that? Is that the six fifty?
No, the six fifties are going to be paid. It's thirteen hundreds.
All right, thirteen hundreds.
That's right.
And I thought they based it on what we had submitted for what we've accomplished.
It had now, it has to do with. If you look on their website there, it has to do with the size of the town and we fall in. In the smaller towns, there's thirteen hundred, larger towns are way up. And there might be a few. There's just three categories. It has nothing to do with what we've done. But then by October thirty first. You can read it. You can see that that's when he needs to start putting in. Have put in the road erosion inventory and everything.
Now last year we did a lot more.
Started out, yeah.
Is Rob still?
Well, he's not getting paid for it, so no, he's not going to. I mean, you can ask him a question, but. They kind of took that away from him.
Okay.
And Dylan assured me that he was. Doing, because I went to many workshops on it, but he felt like he. Could handle it.
Yeah, well, I know it got submitted last year. Remember Rob, Rob actually worked with Dylan and submitted.
He did, yes.
Okay. That's nothing, that was actually stapled together.
What's all I want to hear for? Correspondence. Project managing group.
Add to the business. Being kind of requested, I need inquiry from the president. Asking what our position is, what the town's position is on green burial. And. I don't know that we have a position. Because my understanding is this is, the state permits it. And I don't.
But the town could put some regulations on private cemeteries or whatever. Here's the thing, green burials, one of the things that I showed Devin everything was. That ways right now, you can private burial on your own personal. Personal, then you intuitively, the people whose relatives of. The person buried there can visit at any time. So you don't really have privacy with your own land because the former people could come back. Cremation. Cremations are different because they. Really there, you know, but. If you decide for green burials, it is a body, so it might have to follow the first. Where the regular private burial because. That person's remains is there, and so all relatives will be able to forever. Visit that site.
Do they have to get a right of way?
And so we talked about an easement.
An easement.
To be put into the. Forty deeds future of so that the relatives can always have a right. So it might affect the property value, and if that's something that the town might have to take into consideration when assessing the property.
Well, the, I don't think that we can start changing how you assess properties. That P P R, P P R is going to tell us. Whether that will affect it or not, we're just speculating there. I do think that you. Need to highly suggest to people to do it right away.
Yes, the knees, I guess. But one of the things that. We might be getting more and more of them and. Should it be zoning, something about zoning about it?
Well, do you have any further deeper information where it allows us? Put it in zoning?
Well, still has in their cemetery. Regulations, this is one of the things they are looking into with their zoning. Is if they're going to allow private, private burials at all. So I don't know, uh, this is just something I called up and asked because somebody came to me about it. I told her I'd get back to her. I did talk to one town, which I knew was having a. Then I handed it over to Kurt because it sounded like, I don't know if you talked to her or not. But it sounded like she wanted the town to know the town's position about it. And I don't really.
We don't have a physician. I mean, I think this laws, I know that. They discuss it a lot in the legislature and they keep expanding it. But I haven't followed it. A lot, I would have to read them. How they've changed it because it's really involved since I've been in the legislature. Changes.
Now, the town clerks had a, a town clerk meeting in which there was a presentation.
Well, there was, um, the guy from the cemetery association, he told us. Basically, the town should try to brown it on it. Because the problem is, is you might not always. But. It's hard to track these bodies. If somebody wants to remove them and. No or anything, the other thing is, is end up in court between the former owners and the new owners. Yeah, I don't know. It's just.
No, that sounds like, I mean, it really sounds like a private.
It does.
Yeah.
Now, from my understanding, these green burials, you're just basically wrapping the body in. Shrouding.
No, embalming or anything.
Um, they, I'll turn the athlete down. Yeah, we did read that and they do call it a mushroom suit too, a mushroom suit, sorry suit. With how you can get this so it it grows. I guess, or. Sorry, I'll try to be, but um, I, I think we need to restart it.
People are going to want to do it. My system liked it. I mean, I do think it's. People don't like putting embalming weapons into the. Environment.
I'm going to use one example. David Modica has. Baby buried on his property, which he's already talked to him about. He said, no, one fund, you've got a baby move from one cemetery to another. And he's bought two lots up here in Fairmont because he's planning on selling his property. And moving the baby up here. And you have to get a burial permit to move the body from one place to another. But you're also supposed to, and this is the, we, if there's no family director. Involved with it, who is signing that burial permit, that burial permit? I mean, I, that's the other thing. Are, are they going to be required to put it on file towns? We know where these people are buried.
If it's in your cemetery, yes.
But not on private property.
Well, you already have your cemetery rules of procedure.
You still have to go through it.
But green barriers isn't considered a cemetery. That is what legislature has not determined yet. Well, no.
Have to go to the commission.
Green, if you want a lot, if you want to purchase a lot, you still have to put all the stuff.
But I haven't got green burials on private property.
Right. But is that our problem?
Don't know.
That sounds like. This requires some real research and digging.
Yeah, I would need to, I would need to do.
I, I still think you'd, like you said, get the easement, still have to put. Put it somewhere in the noting in the town.
Properties, yeah. I think the answers to these questions are, they're out there, just got to dig them out.
Yeah, and towns are starting to.
She's not very issue.
But I might have another one that is, so I'm not sure.
And it'd be good to hear two sides of the story. So a cemetery person, of course, would be. Biased to on what, you know, cemeteries and stuff. I thought, you know, it'd be good to hear people on both sides.
Even if somebody is cremated, they do get a cremation certificate from the crematory. And they a lot of times put it on file with the, they are buried.
They're required to, yeah.
But private property, they are not required. So that might be something.
Well, we could see if, if we were allowed to do that. So I guess it'd be a matter of digging up some of our lawyers.
We'll make a project.
I don't care. I'm erasing the data. I'm sorry.
I didn't even hear what he said.
I'm erasing the data.
How did you work with that?
Very carefully.
So Brownfield study, as was mentioned in. Now, meeting, we did have phase one, Brownfield. Study completed, somewhat inconclusive, and so Linda is on the. Uh, connecting with LCPC. To initiate funding for a phase twos. Not sure how long that's going to take.
They need to reach out to the contractor to be part of the phase one to get a. Price of what phase two would cost and then. That is submitted to the Brownfields Committee for approval for that money. That's how it works. Because they have a federal grant money on that and. Depending on the balance of that grant.
The municipal energy resilience program. This is the grant program that. BLCT is offering some assistance with. Received the application paperwork. Is this the plan we were? So. We, I'm going to get together with the BLCT.
LCPC?
I'm sorry.
LCPC?
I was, I'm sorry.
Yes.
LCPC. Um, will we bid?
Can I ask you a question here?
Sure.
Are you going to ask for a level one or a level two? Pre-energy assessments.
Yes, pre-energy assessment.
And then this. Two le- level, two levels are available. Just one is walkthrough assessment.
Yeah.
And the other one is. Investment grade audit. One takes an hour and a half, one takes four hours.
Uh, yeah, well, my thought was, I mean, this is. For a number of purposes, but. Level one. This was what I'm thinking at this point. Level two, the investment grade audit. I gotta talk to them about what that means. Investment grade audit is.
More like you want to see how energy efficient your buildings are.
Right.
So then they're going to give you a, give you a complete list. Insulating, power.
Yeah.
Water, so for so long, upgrades.
Just to see if we have, if you can hear. Staff since you'd be available, so this is another project in person. So class three grant application, this is an application. That we. Present every year. And we are in the process now. It was supposed to be this week, but I think the weather. Deleted, where Pike is going to come by and give some quotes. Finishing up the pavement patching on North Wilkett Road. We do have a North Wilkett Road. Project for. The north end. That was approved previously, not implemented. Planned on being implemented this year, but we still want to do an application for the south end. Which unfortunately, we ran out of money last year to complete that pavement.
Do we know whether that bid is still stands or it's been caused more?
I don't know. It's a good question.
Could you ask him?
Yeah.
Because they might not hold. To that price, so Dylan needs to.
That, that's a good question. So on April, Michelle's coming to meet with us in April. To do a, do an assessment of. Those brands and take a look at the road. I think she'll be a key factor in improving the class three application, even though we just have one. And then finally. Website, phase two. This is something we talked about way, way back. And it was. The, the first step of phase two for the website was to integrate GIS. And GIS took. Quite a bit of time to come up to speed, but it is now up to speed and it is active and live at this point. And so that was kind of the kickoff of phase two. And phase two includes. Is a, a number of things that. Look and feel oriented. It includes. Things like interactive online forums where. A, a building permit or a permit of any kind can actually be filled out online and sent. And it will go to either the listeners or the zoning administrator and so forth. And this is kind of getting back to real, the COVID. Or the ARPA funds is. A designing a system which allows. Residents to do business without having to come in and close, close proximity with others. And so I think the website phase two is where we'll be able to implement quite a number of these ideas. One, phase one was really under the hood. When we looked at the website initially, we learned that it was. And it was not secure. And we were probably four versions behind when the underlying software. And so all of that got fixed on phase one. And that's kind of, it was under the hood, so you didn't really see anything. This is the point where you start to see that. So it is. Cleaning up some of the, if you look at the website right now, it's cluttered. That's doesn't necessarily all in the boxes. The layout of where documents are and how access is, a bit ago. And then there's some other features that can be built in light, in CAI integration. Potentially integrating the state fire warden. Where fire information on a, on a regular time basis is always there. And so I know that the fire warden gets phone calls for permits. Um and so I know that the fire warden uh gets phone calls for permits. On days that are no burn days, you know, they're, but the state mandated no burn days. And this way, I was looking at the website and said, okay, this is a no burn day. Um and it's that kind of activity, now, we in the past have used um.
Collaborative? Collaborative?
Collaborative, no, not maybe that's. I can never remember.
Collaborations?
Collaboration, thirty-three. Uh and they did that, they did all of that, um under the hood work, um and. We've had a new resident come forward, uh Bradley Horstman. Uh who has quite a history at website, uh and implementation specifically. Um using the tools that we already have, and he has put together um a proposal. For us to consider, and that is in your packet, um and so. What I would like to propose is that uh everybody get a chance to read it. Uh kind of come up with some questions, concerns, whatever, and we'd like to schedule a meeting with Bradley. Um in the next week to ten days, um uh. And just to uh be able to ask questions and to kind of hone our thinking. On this, I can. I think Bradley's online right here now, um I did tell him before the meeting that um you were. Uh for this meeting, since I know everybody hasn't had a chance to read the proposal, we were just going to introduce it to the board. And uh set up question, Q and A sessions in the next week, like this. And that's it for the.
What about the mowing bids?
Oh, mowing bid, uh the mowing bid is out, it's will be in the. Uh newspaper for the, it was in once, it'll be in for two more times. Um I've gotten two responses on it so far, um our incumbent has not responded. Um but we do have two, two very qualified responses so far. These will be coming in sealed, uh sealed bids, and um uh the due date is April fifteenth. We've had them come by, um we've had our uh person rec, uh manager talk.
But just to talk about um. What's different with the garden and park from the last time there was a. A bid.
Yeah, just getting a little more detail on um on what's being used over here. The contract we had previously did not include um weed whacking around uh the park. Amenities, and so uh it just became kind of difficult to manage. The park can just look a lot better, and it's built into the contract with our law. And we're gonna put out a separate bid for.
Brush.
Brush hogging, and for the North Wilkett Ball Field and Transfer Station. Uh and there also is an interest on both of these applicants to potentially put in a bid for plowing next year.
Thinking of plowing, are you done?
Yeah.
We really need to um. Have a much better plan for snowing room at the library.
Are you talking about a shovel in the rain?
Um all of it, those piles were just shoved in front of the. Handicap ramp, uh the roof, the snow coming off the roof, you can't even get in there. As some, I don't know, we need to think of. Think of what we're gonna do about it, um and also I noticed that. And and Dylan did bring it up, or someone wrote it up, about plowing. Class three up to the railroad, so maybe. Have a discussion on how they can not um do that next year, it doesn't matter this year. But we can't be, people are not gonna be able to get on the trail from here, they have to climb up a mountain of snow. Just all the things we, we just really need to think about um. With rail trail, maybe taking some of that, maybe taking some of that snow up with a loader and putting it over in the. Near, next to the ball field, I mean, other towns do that when it gets too hot, when it. Just can't be there like that. Not only does it. Then it it um it reduces parking too, so I don't know.
We just, well, I think if the core of it, we we need reliable, reliable.
Well, I'm not blaming anyone or saying it's anyone's fault, I think it's just something that um.
No, I know, but I mean.
We need to think about how, how we're gonna deal with it next winter, that's all.
And I just think that the core of it is, you know, we come up with a plan on how to deal with it.
Yeah.
And having a reliable source to actually work through this.
Right.
That's been the top.
Who owns the property in back of the uh depot?
Um.
Andy, those owners.
Yeah.
Wonder if she would allow us to push the snow?
Well, we're in um. Discussions with the state about leasing that land back there, um nothing's really, you know. I just mentioned it to them that we were interested in that and hoping that. When we get the details, then maybe we can have some plan of how we can bring the snow around or something. We definitely don't want people driving on there, so we're gonna have to think of how we're gonna prevent people from driving on a rail trail, but. It isn't by, by the snow.
It has been gone down by the uh. Now, the old pond road.
Well, there's not, oh, in for parking?
No, for keeping vehicles off from the rail trail, what have you done there?
I don't know.
I mean, you'd have to have at least a four, four gap if you're gonna uh cement pillars. So snowmobiles can go through, but then.
Right.
But somebody's crazy enough to hit one.
Well, I thought about that too, I haven't really, I mean, we have so many things on our plan, and and then I was thinking, wow, maybe if it was emergency. You wouldn't want that, and I was thinking, you could go get on Spole Street. Down here, if there was emergency and you needed someone to go onto the trail or the emergency vehicle or something. But.
I don't think there's any emergency vehicles small enough.
Well, it's not gonna be on.
Well, at least the only thing.
In the winter, if you have a track, that's one of the things we're talking about, if they're coming along. Something that has a track. You know what I mean, like a snowmobile in the winter?
Yeah, but sorry, using a snowmobile, that would be a track.
Right, but there are um side by side that have some tracks, so that is a discussion that we've been starting at ATV. I don't know.
Well, and too, we might wanna just um. Experience what has happened before we make a decision, you know, see what happens this year and how we. Is it a problem, or are we inventing a problem? All right, let's move on to town meeting ballot, um. So we have one cemetery commissioner position vacant.
Yes, the four-year.
And they brought four to name to us?
No. So I've I've been asking, oh, wow, you want me? He wants to work with them.
So um.
Well, they're pretty licensed.
Well, I know, but you don't understand what's they, they just.
The law says that we need to post it for ten days, so we need to put a notice. Uh that we're looking for a position on our, on our website. The voting board.
So Bradley?
Bradley.
Are you interested in the cemetery commissioner uh four-year term?
Boy, I sure would like to read more about it first.
I can um get your email from uh her and I'll send you what I have on statute for it.
Absolutely, I I am interested in many of the moving parts of the town, so cemetery. Seems doable.
We don't meet that often, just so you know.
Me, meetings are fine, as long as I don't have to bury anybody or, you know.
We don't get our hands dirty.
Sounds great, I have a, I have somewhat of a passion for cemeteries, I appreciate the uh, sort of the solstice you can get out of. Visiting a cemetery and uh it just kind of reminds us of our mortality, so I think it'd be a good fit for me.
I'll definitely send you your vote then.
Thanks.
Town meeting review. Any comments on town meeting? Dylan, hold on, Dylan.
I had a little uh, little trouble getting the audio going right at the beginning, but uh. Um otherwise, it was. Okay, uh people seemed to appreciate it, uh the, the livestream, we only had. I think seven people watching live, but there were, um it's showing like seventy-six views. Now, and there were seventy-four uh within like a day of the meeting, so it seemed like. The accessibility of it was well received, we gained five more subscribers to the YouTube channel. From that video, and I put a post in Front Porch Forum, what he didn't know was the timing of when you posted Front Porch Forum. Uh I put it in and it didn't go until like four P M. the day of town meeting, so it was active, meaning you had.
It's like you have to do it the day before.
Yeah, so.
Or is it the day?
I'm learning about Front Porch Forum, so that was a bummer, but uh I did run into a few people at like Elmore Store who were grateful that. It was there and they watched, you know, parts of it, and uh so I think that part was nice.
Um I can say that, you know, the comment is that the audio was. Much better than the audio we get out of this meeting, much, much better.
Interesting. Yeah, I uh, I also had an opportunity to compare, cause we have the exact same meeting system as Elmore. And they have only one of these auxiliary mics, and their mic picks up voices close to it a lot better than these ones do. This one seems to be primarily relying on the bar, and uh. I think it may have something to do with the acoustics of the room, because we have so many hard walls. And a fairly hard floor, um the echo seems to confuse it and it doesn't pick up, it doesn't. It's like an A I. system inside that's using parallax and the sound waves. To identify where speakers are, and um I don't think it's liking the sound it's picking up out of there, it's preferentially selecting the sound. Here for the feed, and so. Every meeting is a chance to kind of mess with it and see if we can make it better, I am curious if it's better when they're up on the ceiling. Yeah, they might be, uh the way the Elmore model performed was just very different than the ones in here seem to be. So um, and I may even play around with. How they're just one versus all three, that might be another, um.
You think the mic made a difference too versus we don't have a mic here?
So the only thing I was using for the audio, it, my virtual soundboard ended up not working. I I couldn't get some configuration correct, so in the Scrabble, I just selected those two boost back mics. Those are the only mics in the room that were hot, and I moved them around a little bit, I think you guys saw me. Uh they tend to pick up sounds from an area right around. Uh pretty broadly, and they pick up the sound of the room, okay, so I had one out where the microphone stand that, I wanna point out, nobody does. Not one person came up to the mic. So one other piece of feedback to myself that I took a note on, uh was I wanna look into. I don't know if you guys have ever watched uh like NFL games where they have the NFL Films crew, they have this big parabolic mic that they hold with two hands like this. But they can actually point it and pick up sound from across the field, uh very specific to a location. And I don't need one like this, but you know, maybe one about this, but handheld. That you can aim at somebody in the room, because I think the nature of people in these meetings, and this happened at the special town meeting we had as well. Um they just wanna stand up and speak, and.
So we do have a karaoke machine, which does have microphones, and I've been doing a little research on it, and I think we could hook that into the school system and use that.
Yes, I think that's true, um but they need a microphone runner.
Yeah, I could get one here.
Yeah, it's a good one.
I I found this, we have this, uh it's your daughter, right? You have a microphone runner for one of our meetings, um Richard, be careful, your feet are hooked into the wire from the mic there. Uh I know what you're pulling down, um. I just, the feeling to the nature of people is not to wait for the microphone, they just wanna get up and say their thing. And I think if we have a centerless person with a parabolic, it's an idea, uh I I'd be.
You still can't have a person doing this, though.
Well, I mean, it's just a little handheld, like, almost like a, almost like a. Sadly, like a pistol, I guess, but with a big dome on it, and you just kind of point it in the direction like a spot, you have, you have a headset. You have headsets, you can hear what's picking up and you can kind of find tune it.
That sounds way more than me.
Well, look at that, it's instead of running.
Yeah, how many questions were there, there were a camp, it's easy to run, there are all, all the people who wanna speak. For the ballpark are sitting in the bleachers.
Yes, so I.
You know.
I would suggest not for the town to buy it, it's, it's for me, because I, that was my like personal rental meeting system that I used with the. With the high powered cameras, off the corners, um that I mainly manipulate or I switch the film well and. Uh it's a system that I would like to continue to dial in for my own potential. Use, getting paid to do it in other places, but I'm quite happy to use the town of Wilkett. As a volunteer situation, so you get the benefit of the service and I get the benefit of practice.
I would be happy to be a runner, but I'm not wearing headphones, it's a monitoring.
Even though we have a whole other year to decide.
Or unless we have a special meeting in between.
I I wish the town meeting would have been a little more attended and after the town, everybody left.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What do you mean for the school?
I'm wondering if we did the school first, but they would stick for the town. It's just the idea.
I made a vote on the school, but I didn't leave.
Yeah.
Which usually, you know, they irritate, I don't know, I mean, I mean, it was so obvious. You know, they'd come in and vote yes on the school, but I didn't, no, I did it again, and I, so I, yeah, who did, who saw it, it's um. Towering used to be, and they'd get very upset, I believe, which I felt was really insulting to the. The functions of the town, not just the damn school budget.
Linda did make a suggestion to me earlier today, which I am very much thinking about, because we do have two. Two initial Australian ballot votes, um I'm thinking to leave that Australian ballot vote here. and just have the town meeting up there and then I can come back here and finish the Australian ballot. My people froze. Be honest, it was cold and.
It's cold and big and, yeah, and people driving all the way up there.
And we didn't get that many, I only had a hundred and fifty more voted.
Okay, that's your orders.
About hundred forty eight. Yeah.
About ten percent, eleven percent.
Even on the Australian ballot.
Did you get different numbers for each each hour?
I'm too uh. I think two uh.
Yeah. Different than two.
Uh town had two less ballots than school and they were by Australia.
Any other comments on town meeting?
Yeah.
Any other comments on town meetings, this town meeting review or just how you got the day when or?
Sound report was very well received from the people who talked to me at town meeting. The justice for dogs, you know, they just.
Yeah, I didn't want to have a heartbreak today.
Not even well known, great um photography, it's not that very, especially the cover book, just very impressed.
And the Girl Scouts did very well too.
And I think uh I think uh. They did most of the photograph.
Brian Beard.
Yeah, I I did, I did tell him I was really impressed with. He got some wonderful candid shots.
Yeah.
I think that was a wonderful motif for the town, which is, and it kind of highlighted the gathering.
Right.
There too, let's do this, yeah.
What kind of brings the community together, you know, a whole community and we're talking about doing um activity on the round trail for next year for all the four seasons, how Woke residents are enjoying the round trail?
Oh, that's nice.
Uh a couple of highlights that I also uh spoke to a couple neighbors about where there was uh Kurt had been speaking on um uh anyway, basically educating the town, I think I think it was in the discussion about the brown field. Um I think people um were pretty happy to learn a lot there. And the other one was um on the school board. What is his name?
Gordon.
Gordon, so Gordon was talking about some of the details of what's really driving the the tax rate and how it really, how much of it really lies on the uh out of out of town tuitions. And um I felt like I heard from a bunch of people like that was really useful. So I think that's another great aspect of town meetings is learning.
Well, I thought the conversations were really good, uh that was the best part, I liked that the people were asking questions about it and I think we have a lot of new residents or, you know, their learning curve is just starting on how Vermont local rural government works and um. So I I was really pleased that we had, I I could have had conversations all day.
But. Have to see what's going on here. Maybe you're watching the other thing out.
It's few times it's started getting out of hand, but. Playing fire, which we well controlled.
Yeah, Joe Joe's a good, good runner. I applaud.
Yeah, the comments before we move on. So Northeast Kingdom broadband appointment, I guess it was brought to my attention that we need to reappoint Bruce Wheeler. Kurt's been in correspondence.
Right, so the Nectar broadband Woke representative is currently Bruce Wheeler. And it is uh he has asked to uh be nominated again as his his term is coming up. Uh the the Nectar broadband organization has a new nomination form. It's not quite ready yet, we'll have it this week. And if we choose to nominate Bruce, we'll get that into the minutes and then we'll follow up with their their latest form. So Bruce uh initiated this, uh the group from Nectar Band uh chimed in and said, yes, they're excited that potentially have Bruce back, I don't know that they have any other nominations. Um but I would uh I would make a motion that we reappoint um Bruce. He's a he's a good rep for this, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Flavos, in favor of appointing Bruce Wheeler as Northeast Kingdom Broadband Representative for Woke for the coming year, say aye.
Aye.
Close. So Karen. Whatever, then.
So um this year, we tried to get that from the guardrails a little better than we did last year. Um and so Dylan um did get a quote from Woke yet. Um I believe it's in your package. Um and I was a little bit bowled over by the cost of this. Um we budgeted, I would like to. Many years this year for each for the twenty thirteen fourteen year uh that we had in the past, we had fifteen thousand, I believe it was. And this uh quote is up thirty thousand plus. Um so I just want to bring that to the board's attention, uh there's a couple of places where we really need guardrails, uh one is spinning up on East Hill Road and the other is right here on School Street where when Hardwick Electric came in to put this three phase line over to uh to the building, it cut down a bunch of trees, which used to be the guardrail and now those trees are gone, it's a it requires a guardrail. Um so the most expensive one is East Elmore Road, um.
And what is that, where is that? You know?
Most of it down towards the bottom. Because there's a ravine to the.
What do you mean by the bottom?
Well, when you start up, you have that steep hill.
Yeah.
Right through there.
Yeah.
Because there's quite a ravine going into that little stream.
And is that because we expect more traffic once the worst is gone?
Well, there's actual rules that you are supposed to follow for guardrails and it has to do with, you know, how it falls off and they tell you when one is needed.
So not based on traffic, but.
No, it's usually.
You know, it's based on how far you're falling to the focus.
It can ask pretty far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um but that uh but that if East Elmore Road um is a a big chunk of this quote. Um so I don't know what the board wants to do, if we want to borrow money from other road projects, um if we want to prioritize these over a two year period. Uh there's there's a couple of ways to go, that um we might want to have a uh when when the weather gets a little better, we might want to look at these sites with Dylan and um so everybody kind of understand what you can do. The other thing about this quote is that it is uh they offer used or new and the used is significantly less expensive. And the question I have is what, does this mean they're rusty event or does this mean they're uh just a refurb?
Or, well, you know, the longevity of them if they're used.
Yeah. But the price for new um is quite.
Is this new?
Does that.
But now they're like, Bruce, it's East Elmore.
Oh, I see.
At used and they they two different lines.
Oh, so they're both um alright, see, I think they need, so I was adding up the whole.
Oh, no, no, they uh you gotta look at this for example.
Basically, you're only talking a thousand dollars difference on the East Elmore, which is mean you should go on new because that's quite a.
The the other thing is, it says they're they'll take the old guardrails, wouldn't you want to do that and take turn them into scrap metal? Or is that just something our recruit would be able to do?
Well, they would, I I they would, they would include in the quotas the removal, which requires some skill and certain machinery.
Um but does it say at the bottom, doesn't it say that they'll haul it away?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that could probably be negotiated, I.
And you guys have five thousand in this year, so fifteen is in the new year, will you be able to use the five thousand this year or will you be able to in June allocate it? You know, assign it to the new year?
Is it possible to assign?
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting. That we don't use the five thousand this year and in June, we put it in that front balance where we assign it to Culvers. And there are like twenty thousand.
Always.
Yeah. And July first will have twenty thousand, five from this year and fifteen from July. Black garden. So I just put it called studio.
That's right.
So do they have to have an answer on the quote or?
Um, yeah, I mean, they're going to because there's huge demand for these things and I think we want to get money. But um I wanted to kind of get the feedback from the board here and then have a meeting with them, Dylan. Um and any board member would like to get, you know, or join in on that um and ask these kinds of questions like, can we keep the old guardrails?
So I would say that the North Woke Road is just cosmetic.
Yeah.
That could be.
I.
Is my my feeling.
So you're you're uh the priorities should be what, East Elmore Road and School Street Bridge in front of the fire department? And East Hill Road.
Yeah, the East Hill one is.
If all of them, I would think East Hill's the worst, yeah.
Yes.
It's part of the cemetery.
Cemetery.
I am.
And it's.
Some of them have.
Always one of our town.
Made it down safely off that.
By using the guardrail?
No. All I would make it down through. Passed out and came down through.
Okay.
Well, Mark is also in the greatest shade when you bait it.
Well, then perhaps when we were talking East Hill and School Street for that flu priority.
And you see East Elmore, I think the one I I think one you can cut out for weight on is North Woke, just because it's ugly.
Is that one on the curb someone hit? And it's kind of flopping in the breeze, but.
Talking about damage, what the hell happened to the gate of the transfer station?
Oh. Okay.
Nobody wants to talk about that?
I don't know anything about it. Is that? When did that happen?
I don't know, I just noticed that they come to it, it looked like a very angry piece of damage to that left hand gate.
Because I think Nathan did a plowing, yes.
Well, plowing make it look angry and do it, but it's still punctual.
That gate is gotten to be replaced at some point. It's been welded together, it's been, you know, people have ripped it off its hinges, it's just.
Shot at head.
Everything, everything.
Well, it 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 shows it's ruggedness, I would leave, I would leave it actually, it looks like it's offering and vapor, so. What if we were to do this as a year plan? I can see East Hill being a major one. And then the uh East Elmore and North Woke Road and front of the fire department. Second year. I mean, you already have some already on East Elmore Road.
Yeah, they've been long overdue.
But I mean, you've got some there already.
Right.
So it's not as dangerous as the East Hill, East Hill has none.
Right, that's.
Well, if East Hill is new, it's eighteen thousand and that and we only and we have um twenty.
But the other thing is, is you know, you might have some other areas left in highway at the end of the year, we don't know yet. Or you could, you can take it from class three construction because if it's new construction, we can do that.
Well, then you can throw in the North Woke Road and East Hill, because that's.
Well, North Woke Road is not a class three.
No, but I mean, you could use it for your guardrail and then you could take it in as your class three on the East Hill.
Well, the end of March is our third quarter, we could have some financials on it, so we'll go to the highway department and see how it's handling.
Because you're only talking basically around twenty three and three and a half. It sounds like what you said, like these companies are in very high demand. Resting on ground slotted up.
We kind of get one.
Yeah, and it looks like three out of four of these have to be done yesterday, really.
Well, I think, yeah, I agree, but I think we get to the end of March, financials. Then we really know what our numbers can be.
Yeah.
Yep.
It sounds like we can't dally on this very long.
No, 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 that's what I'm.
Yeah.
And you want your meeting with them in between. Um so you can bring us back, you know, whether we should do the used or new and all that stuff.
So I'll get the findings to you at the end of March and then you guys will be, oh, your first people maybe.
Okay.
We miss you, Alan.
Sorry, I forgot about it, guys.
I called your house.
Oh, sorry about that.
You're busy man.
Well, look at you. Okay, one last thing, transfer station financials.
So I sent you guys a memo and attached is unpaid bills, um. The transfer station is starting to run in the negative. And we're getting a little behind on our bill, we're only one month behind, but as you can see, February bills are quite large. And I found that in February, I really think that we called in our doctors too soon and then we shouldn't let them go two weeks instead of one week. We have had a conversation with somebody, but I think that he needs a little guidance is supervision and have maybe somebody check for some things or just possible to learn about our authorities. Because I think we can go sometimes when it's low, like this week we only did fourteen hundred. Uh he asked me to call in the recycling and the covered garbage. Didn't check, they. Didn't check, they were three quarters full, and knew they weren't going to be able to go another week. So we did call him, I did call him in. Um, cardboard is another thing of, you know, we're not charging anything for it. And every time they transfer it, it's a hundred ninety-six dollars that we have to eat. So they're.
It's not charging for carbon?
No.
We should. Maybe it's part of recycling.
Well, it's a dollar for a container, but I mean, some of those boxes are huge, you know what I'm saying? And each time you pull that, even if you charge only a dollar, you know, I mean, there's more than one box in there. I don't think he's letting it go all the way to the top like he should. Because after a while, it gets hard to put stuff in.
Those two door openings make it really difficult. You were able to go in from where they dump it and actually stack it to the top. So once you get to, to that, and you door opening, and then all of a sudden, you just say, yeah, girl. Yeah, I know, push it back, and reset, and it's good.
Not, oh, not all the carbon is being broken down if I have taken some out of broken. I'm not talking small boxes, I'm talking big ones.
Well, then just, yeah, there's no reason for him to be excessively pleasant with these lanes and buggers. Hey, the sign, I think there's a sign right here, it can be broken down.
No, it's very broken down.
But still, the other thing is like confrontation, see.
Really?
But I just think he, one more.
Well, we, we are evidently, we're losing money, I mean, now. Four years ago, we had like ten thousand dollars reserved. Now we're in the hole, so we need to deal with something because it's not working. Well, I don't, and, uh, it's not working up there, we're not charging enough, or people aren't being charged enough, overtaking it too much.
I think it's time to revisit what the confrontation is charging.
But we have, and we have, and we have, I don't think that's the problem, the problem is.
Probably see it, and it's been that way from the beginning.
Right.
Nice, wonderful guy.
Yeah.
If you cut to the chase, you know, the word, you really want to fix it?
But how can we, but if, if that's the problem, then we should shut the dump, because now that we.
Well, then that is what it's coming down to, I mean, we're running a business.
I know that, but to, we're providing a service to the community, and yes, we have to run it efficiently. If he can't. Tape up on more carefully examining what's coming in. And charging accordingly, I think there may be some problem there. Whereas, I mean, that's the, that's the only thing I can see. That it's really the attendance. Thing, because when I was running, when they. When they swapped Mark and Hi's position, he was in charge, and they swapped it because they could see. That the receipts were coming in noticeably higher on the weekends, I was looking, and he was. And it wasn't a matter of anything dishonest, it was just he was not going out. And examining what was coming in and making sure people were paying a fair price. For whatever they ran in, and also. You know, with the cardboard saying, you're gonna have, just, you're just gonna have to holler at them. You know, take it home if you're not gonna break it down, you know?
If you look at the unpaid bill detail, if you look at the seller, now through recycling and your, um. Garbage is going, but then you look at Dana Sweet Trucking, and the trucking is more than the garbage. And that is a problem.
Why, you've got the increased fuel costs, which are ridiculous, I mean, you're at phenomenal.
You can take out two hundred, because that's our rental before things we rent, which we're going to have, they're over head cars now. But it's still over the amount of what is costing us to get rid of recycling and the garbage.
On transportation has become a very.
But they haven't raised their rates for a year, so it has nothing to do with the fuel cost, it's the contract. That we have, and it has to do with how many times we've hit.
Yeah.
So it's not whole.
Yeah, and then, and then he's got to monitor more closely, and never have someone check on it. So.
Well, what we're really saying, I think we've said it over and again. You know, he's got to do this, he's got to do that, he's got to do that, and you've got to go tell him to do it. You've got to go crack the whip on this thing. And I have, I know you have. As long as I can.
I did too.
And it doesn't work, so.
It's not, it's not helping?
No, no, I mean, well, you know, and the business suggesting here that one of us should go up there every single weekend and babysit this thing. I mean, the problem is right out in front of us. Unless, but somebody else can go and try to whip him into shape, because he just, I just, he doesn't listen. Or he listens, but he doesn't do it, if he misses.
Well, he's not listening, it doesn't do, I mean, he's over employed.
I mean, I don't know, I mean.
But then again, finding somebody that's.
It's impossible.
And you're finding anybody that's more than just breathing.
So that, you know, yeah, right, so, so, so like, we're members, gotta go up there every single weekend and do it. I, I did it for two months up there with you. Um, you know, every single weekend, and. I, you know, need some help with solutions for this.
Well, obviously, we can't afford to have an assistant.
Well, we're, he's been having help, uh, from the corrections, it's not like he's not, I mean, you do pay that. Um, actually, they haven't billed me in quite a while, so I don't even know what's going on. Just letting you know. Um, and I haven't reached out for any bill, I don't want, you know what I'm saying? But they might hit us for a quarter, just so you know, but in the meantime, I want to make sure that we keep Pacella and Dana Sweet happy. And usually, we're not a month behind on paying, but we are at this point, and I think it's because the winter. Has had a lot of snow, I also think that we've been calling in, they picked up too many times. So I think we have to ask a loan, uh, ask for loans from the town, and then pay it back over a year. And we have to stop calling in the dumpsters every week.
Does, um, so should, um. You feel that someone should go up there and check the dumpsters before they're calling?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I will try and go Sunday afternoon around twelve. And do my garbage then, um, or this last weekend, I didn't take any garbage, but I did go up and just took a look. And, um, it was three quarters, I did agree with him on that, there's no way it could last, which was recycling. But.
Yeah.
The garbage could, and this is one of the things I want to ask you, if it's three quarters. Then we don't necessarily have to take that one. We're gonna have to have the big one.
The open one.
The open one. If we, and I have to call, uh, Matt early Monday, and he goes up and picks it up that day, so we don't have vectors. Which are birds. So we save compliance.
Another option is if we added the cardboard roll on during COVID, because it became apparent that. Nothing was done by box.
Yeah.
Um, it was overflowing.
And that's the big money maker on recycling is corrugated, and for the industry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. If we can't, we can't afford to do that, because a hundred and ninety dollars all up. We can get rid of it and just say, recycling, oh, it's full. Which is the way it used to be.
Plus, um, yeah, plus where, yeah. Because you can see the weight too, is ridiculous.
And it's really low. I mean, one of the highest was point seven eight.
Is, is the corrugating going to stow yet? Still, not.
No, they're having problems with it.
And, um. I imagine more than. Corrugated goes in there, is all cardboard in there?
All cardboard.
Even color.
I think it's time to say that, the cardboard. Just. Use that one dumpster, if it gets full over the weekend, so be it.
I'll have him pick it up by the moment it's full, and we just run for the bank. Now, same as fifty bucks a month more for not having.
Because I've seen at times, I've been there on Saturday morning or even Sunday night, it's full. You know, with that, I'll sit here, and he gives me back my bill, and wait, I go, wait till the next time. What, uh, what constitutes a dollar's worth of air and water? In terms of like.
You know, it's a blue bin.
One of those recycling bin? It's basically about the size of that three. Yeah.
So I know how you guys can think about it, and we're not going to pay the bills until April anyhow. So you can write me down. You're awesome.
It sounds like we need, um, to at least give them another training.
Yeah.
In front of the board.
The only other solution is to have them come home and turn all the boxes up. Before they put them in that big dumpster, but does it really matter? Doesn't, take them somewhere else.
So can you put that on a general, or is it stating, gentlemen, I'd like everybody to put their thinking caps on it. Of what they think is the best solution for handling this? Because if it still keeps going like this, and we're borrowing money from the town and having to pay this loan. We're just never gonna catch up, so it, it has to be something a little bit more.
Process. The money needs to be done.
It's not, I feel like we've got to very carefully monitoring the hauling. When, when stuff is prepared or made of. Seems to me the government that is entirely monitoring, actually. Carefully monitoring what customers are bringing in and charging and boarding, because I think that's a weak point.
Well, I've told him before, you know, he needs to charge enough where we're going to close the land view. You know, it's, I, I've told him that we're in the red. He needs to understand that, at least, I think he could understand that.
I would hope so.
And it is hard, I mean. You know, when people just, you know, don't want to have to pay for garbage.
The other alternative. Well, I remember the pickup load, also, what? Ask me, no, I hated doing that, but I did it. Sometimes I got it right, and sometimes I didn't.
Well, we're not supposed to take any construction free, and that is important, I keep making. That's pretty heavy stuff, especially if it gets wet in the open dumpster.
Oh, yeah, she brought it, oh, yeah.
Can I hope, is that it, do we have anything else?
It's easy to break up, break up so many, about the gate of transportation, but on the outside, what's he? It looks like it, it's been thrown at me so many times, and it's still there. The wiring is still wired, okay, so.
So we are marching to a general?
Already that apology.
Preparing. Thank you. Thank you, Alan, for inviting us.
Thanks for doing us.